This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Southampton Media, I think we're ready. Where's our finance people? Okay, we're on.
No, I texted Donna, but I don't know.
Okay, we are going to call together the, a call to order rather, the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for February 29th, 2024, that's a little after 6 o'clock. And if we could start by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, what is in our hands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So, we have our quorum tonight, and we have Joy remoting in. Welcome back, Joy. Even though a little bit long distance still, we'll see you soon, we hope, next time.
Yeah, next week.
In person. Very good. All right, and we will have our members of finance coming in. Oh, perfect, great. Come on in, come on in. Very good. All right. So while they're sitting down for a minute, I just want to say that we had a great luncheon for Ed yesterday, and thanks to everybody who showed up, and much appreciate everybody being there. And we had a presentation by Rep. Pease's staff and Senator Velez's staff, a citation for Ed's service, not only Southampton, but generally municipal government, for the many years between being West Springfield Mayor, Town Administrator, and Beckett, and Town Administrator here for six years. So this will be your last meeting, and we much appreciate all that you've done. So I'm amazed that you're actually with us tonight and willing to do this meeting tonight, but thank you for doing that.
You caught up me at a weak moment, Chris.
I know I did. I know I did. So with that, we have some members of our Finance Committee too, so thank you. So you guys, Becky and Doug, right? I guess you have a quorum?
No.
To call your meeting to order?
They need three, they need three.
You need three, oh Donna, if Donna comes, okay. Perfect, okay. All right, almost a quorum, not quite. Perfect. Okay, so basically, we're going to be working on two budget hearings tonight. The first up is going to be fire and then on highway. But before we do that, do we have any open time for the public? Yeah, Robert?
Robert Floyd, College Highway, speaking as town moderator. I didn't mention this the other evening, but the date for the presentation materials for the annual town meeting in the town clerk's office will be noon Tuesday, April 30th, which is a week before. So this gives us a chance to go back and forth if there's any need to.
So that'd be, if anybody has handouts that they want to include for the town?
Any presentation materials. And I don't know if they changed the law, but apparently somebody can submit a handout that's anonymous, that's protected, even though it's not subject to open meeting law. Boston protects that, so unless it's changed, I would, you know, I would honor that.
Just remind us that it's a copy into you and to the town clerk?
Oh, just the town clerk.
Just the town clerk.
And then I go and I pick up, and it doesn't have to be all the copies, just, except for the warrant. Don't want to give you pressure there. We know it's coming. We can't have the meeting without it. So the warrant, and the motions, and the explanations.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be there that day, but everything else does.
Sure, okay, very good.
Okay, cheers, thank you.
Yep, we'll work on, keep it to our schedule, yeah. All right, anybody else? Okay. All right, if not, I think we'll get started. So Chief Fasoli.
Richard Fasoli, 6 Rye Road. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the fire department. We had a fire last night on Russellville Road, a porch fire. Residents had some visitors, and I guess they were smoking out on the porch and cut the boards on fire. It was right about quarter past nine when that windstorm kicked up. So luckily, the homeowner spotted it and was able to put it out, and then we just cut the boards away and put out the smoldering, smoldering wood, so. Currently, we are at run number 161. Last year, we were at 145 at this time, and two years ago, 2022, we were at 114.
So just for everybody who's listening at home that may not know what a run is, just tell us what a run is.
Right, so any ambulance or fire call, 911 call, we are up to 161. Administrative assistant started a few, couple months ago, and it's working out good. She's doing payroll, the warrants, turnovers. The biggest issue we have is, you know, I still have my day job, so, you know, she comes over during the day and does stuff, so we're talking on the phone every day, and if I have a day off, then we, you know, we get together and do some training and all that. So it's working out good, it's a big help.
All right.
Dispatch, we moved to East Hampton. We're still having a little trouble with the radios cutting out, but they've been working on the solution for that. We are going to start holding monthly meetings with East Hampton Police, Fire, Southampton Police, so hopefully that will help. Shared fire prevention grant that Chief Norris of East Hampton's been working on, he's got a verbal approval, nothing official yet, but he said it looked good. The only thing that they're not going to approve is the car that he was going for, but other than that, it should be okay. While I was cleaning out the office when I became interim, I found a insurance check from 2018, $908, and finally went through Find Mass Money, and they approved that yesterday. So, so we should be getting a check for that. The 1911 inspections are all done. As we already knew, Engine One failed. I have probably close to $17,000 right now in estimates to fix it. So. So that's the update for the fire department.
Good, well, thanks. So we have from you some budget sheets, and we've got them either printed out or on our, on our email, so, and finance has got them set too, so.
So I just go line by line, or?
However you'd like to do that, yeah. I'll just talk about maybe some changes in terms of, it may be easier, I don't know, to take a look at, especially focusing on the changes from current year to what you're proposing for next year.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Basically, our budget is pretty much going to stay the same. We're in pretty good shape this year. So I'll start with ambulance expense. That's pretty much straightforward. The medical supplies, medical equipment are staying the same, we're in good shape there. Our service agreements are all the same. You know, we have to have a service agreement for a lot of our equipment, our stretcher, our Lucas CPR machines. Ambulance inspection, that was already done this year, so we passed that, that's $1,000 every year.
So can I ask?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So starting with just under ambulance slash EMS expenses, 015236, right? That's where you are?
Yeah.
On the spreadsheet, yeah.
Right, ambulance expense.
So the second item, McKinson?
Right, those are our medical--
It's the rows that I don't, I don't get. So 5,000 was budgeted, was $2,720 actually spent year-to-date?
Right, for 2024, when I made this budget sheet out.
And are you, so it's that next column, the 1,500?
Well, that's what we've, in 2023, that's what we spent for the, when I made this budget out, I went back to 2023 and figured out how much we spent, you know, from January to June, and that was the price I came up with, the projected.
So where it's, the title says fiscal year 24 projected.
Right, that's--
Was '23 actual?
Yes.
Okay.
So only 1,500 spent in '23?
Basically, in the months that are left.
Actual spending in 2024 was $2,700.
Okay.
2023, from when I made this budget sheet to the end of the year, we spent another 1,500 on that account.
So it's fiscal '24 or calendar?
The header says fiscal year 24 projected.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it looks weird on our page here.
So we say for fiscal year '24, the total will be 1,500 plus--
What Chief Fasoli is trying to do is, he has the actuals to a certain point in time in fiscal year '24.
Right.
He does not have the rest of the year. So what he has done is gone back and looked at the historical expenses from that point in time to June 30th, 2023, and said, okay, we're going to, we're going to estimate, we're going to spend the same amount in the months remaining in '24 as we did in '23.
Gotcha.
That's the projected amount.
So then, am I right then to say 2,720 plus 1,500 is what you're anticipating to spend out, which is a little bit less than the 5,000 budgeted? Is that what I'm doing?
Right, right.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Right, so that's what that third column is, is projected for this fiscal year.
I was just curious about adding those two columns.
Yeah, okay, very good.
And, you know, those, they go up and down, those expenses, depending on how many ambulance calls we have, what we use during the call. But it should stay pretty close to what we spent in years past.
Okay, and boundary is also just supplies, or?
Yes, they're a different medical supply. We use, those are the two big ones, and then the medical gear and medical equipment, those are just, when we can't get our supplies from these two companies, then we'll go out and find another company that would have the equipment or the supplies that we need. The service agreement for the LP-15, those are our heart monitors. Each ambulance has one, it's a yearly contract, it's something the state requires that we have serviced every year and certified, along with the Lucas CPR machines.
Okay.
HCEMS is Hampshire County EMS. So that is a yearly membership fee. Air gas is for the O2 bottles. Ambulance inspection, I already said, $1,000, we've already paid that. That, that should stay the same next year. CMID fees is a, when we call the hospital, especially to any hospital in Springfield, we don't call the hospital direct, it's like a operator service is what the CMID is.
Okay.
Stretcher yearly inspection, we just had that done. So again, it's a yearly inspection that the state requires, and so those are done. Communication equipment, we're in the process of moving the repeater up to Mount Tom, so there's going to be a fee for that from Hoyle Cast and Electric, there'll be a monthly fee on that.
And right now, there's no monthly fee, or?
Right, because it's over at the highway. So. Ambulance, I'm requesting a little bump in the Verizon phone account, because our phones currently are iPhone 11s. Each ambulance has to have a phone to be able to talk to the hospital directly, plus there's, it has a, apps on there for, like, one of them is the HandTevy down lower, it's for pediatric emergencies, so you can look up by the weight of the pediatric patient to know what kind of medications and how much medication to give each patient. EMS training, we started this year having a monthly EMS training, so some of that money right there will be going for instructor fees. I Am Responding is an app we use for responding to calls. They, everybody has it on their phone, they click on it that they're responding, that way East Hampton can see it on their screen in case they don't hear who's responding. Plus, when you show up at the station, we have a monitor right inside the door, and it'll tell you who's responding, so you know whether to go on a call or wait for who's showing up.
Okay.
Target Solutions, training software for EMTs, Vector Solutions, the HandTevy I just spoke about, those are all software. Target Solutions is a software program we have on the phones for our daily checks on the ambulance, the ambulances have to be checked every day, and then they also have a weekly check, a more thorough check. The, the Vector Solutions also does the fire truck inspections, so we have a check sheet for that, we do once a week on each truck. Fuel for the ambulance that's through the highway department. So ambulance maintenance, that should be pretty good also. We had a, an, that was, you know, we had an unexpected suspension part go on A1, which cost $4,300 last year. I don't expect that to go again this year. It was a computer for the suspension. So basic maintenance, some stuff we do in-house.
Yeah, tell you what, Chief, let's just take these by mini groups here, so that's kind of the ambulance section, yeah?
Right, ambulance maintenance.
Okay. And then anybody, let's jump in, if anybody's got questions on the ambulance portion of what the chief has presented, are we, we good? Anybody from, yeah, Scott, I'm sorry.
The cost for the service agreements and software, that's not expected to go up?
Sorry, Scott, poke in that mic.
The cost for the service agreements and the software, that's not expected to go up?
Say that again?
The cost for the service agreements and software, that's not expected to go up next year, okay?
No, they're, they should be pretty much the same. We are switching over, the first line there was, on the ambulance expense was the AmbiPro Software License and Agreement. We are switching to a different company, ESO, but we still have to keep one license for the AmbiPro, because all that information will not transfer over. So all the calls, you know, we have to keep our calls for like six, seven years in case a lawyer or anybody needs that information, we need to have that on file. So that's what that first line is.
Okay, good. And Chief, on some of these contracts, do you get any kind of a discount if you pay upfront early on in the year or anything like that, or they?
Not that I'm aware of. The ESO one, we are working on currently, like, the Target Solutions and the Vector Solutions, they also have the same program, so we're trying to bundle them all together, and we should be able to save some money there.
Mm-hmm, okay, good. All right. Yes, please, go ahead, Doug, yep. Yep, you might just need to move that mic around a little bit, sorry, guys. Yep, it's got a weird button on it too, yeah. Yep.
Okay, so the question, just to get my bearings in this analysis for the ambulance, for the fuel, the last line item, it shows that we have 6,000 budgeted, actual year-to-date for FY '24 is 1,450, and then we're expecting through the remainder of the year, another 4,000?
Right, that was only for, the 1,400 was only for the first quarter, so I should be getting three more, three more bills.
Thank you.
Good, okay. With Donna here, do you all need to call your meeting to order as a quorum?
Probably.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Chris, we're just focused on ambulance expenses.
Yeah, just for, yeah.
We're going to come back to ambulance wages later, up on top?
No, no, I think we take ambulance as a group and then building expenses and, you know, I'm just trying to go into--
Right, but we skipped over the whole top section, lines one through 17.
So where would we find those?
We started on line 21.
We started with the--
We skipped the wages.
Oh, okay.
Which I'm fine if we're going to come back to.
Yeah, well, they may be later down, and I don't know--
Yeah, they're far down.
Where the narrative part is, so let's just follow the narrative part, and then we'll come back to the overall, I think that's probably easier.
So we're doing 700 and 703, right?
So, well, yeah, we've done, yeah, the two ambulances.
So the question I had was related to when we talked with Chief Illingsworth, um, thank you, so when we talked to Chief Illingsworth, they also had cell phones that they were purchasing, so I guess my question is more in general for the town, are we, are we collaborating on our cellphone plan purchases so that there may be some savings in getting them together? Trying to identify ways that we could, you know--
I mean, I'm willing to do anything like that.
I'll just, I'll take a note on it and maybe assign it to like, I don't know, a technology committee or something, to look in for next year, maybe we can save a couple thousand dollars.
And how many phones would there be, though, for the ambulance drivers, or?
We have three phones.
Three phones.
Currently, yes.
Thanks. So, yeah, I'll just take that note, and we'll leave the budget as is, but we'll try to investigate it for maybe the next year's budget.
Okay, all right, we'll keep on moving down, if anybody's okay? I'm moving down to building maintenance section?
Building maintenance, I mean, it's a, the building's from 1863, so. We just had the air quality test results, so there's some work that needs to be done there. They recommended replacing the doors into the office area to seal them up better from the vehicle exhaust. So that report came out after I made this budget sheet.
Right.
Building maintenance repair, that's basic, just basic repair. We've had to, had some electrical wiring repaired inside the station, moved some outlets around to make them more useful. Heating equipment repair, the office, hot water baseboard heater has not worked in two years. We've been relying on electric heaters in there, so there's no hot water in the station bathroom. There's hot water in the trailer, it's a separate system, so there hasn't been a priority. The association has agreed to pay for a mini-split AC heat system for the station offices, because currently, right now, we use a window AC and a small portable one that goes in the casement window. They're not very efficient, they don't really cool that much. The heat for the station, again, that's pretty set cost. Heat AC for the trailers, that's a propane--
Thanks.
--system, so that will, that's a separate cost there. The heat for Blemmer Road, we try to keep that down to right around 50 degrees, just so the water and the equipment doesn't freeze.
And Chief, just again, for people who may not know that we've got something on Blemmer Road, so just explain what happened.
Right, we have a small two-bay station on Blemmer Road, Engine One is there, and right now, our UTV trailer is stored there for the winter. In the summer, we keep it on the side of our trailer. The electricity for 204 College High, we, we don't receive a bill. That must be a town thing from EverSource?
Could be, one of those famous credits.
Yeah.
I believe that is what the case is, that the net metering credits predominantly offset the dollar value of the electricity bill at that location.
So, again, the water bill, you know, we don't, we don't use a whole lot of water in the station, most of our water comes from the hydrant for the trucks, so, I mean, we're not billed for that. Charter internet, it's just the internet charge, fire alarm. Septic tank gets pumped out every three years, it was just done two years ago, so that will be done probably next year. Trash expenses for the highway and for, we have a shredding, valley shredding company that comes in every other month and empties our bin. So building maintenance is pretty, pretty straightforward, not a, not a lot of changes there.
Okay. Questions on that subcategory, anybody? No?
So moving on to fire expense, full-time chief, I get, he has a stipend, $750 uniform cost. I've only used $270 on that, I bought a couple shirts and some replacement badges for the future permanent chief. Part-time uniforms, that is mostly for new employees to have the proper uniform, and also if they're on a call and their uniforms get damaged or soiled where they can't be, can't be cleaned. Equipment maintenance, it's just all our equipment on the truck, all our portable equipment, our chainsaw, our jaws. We had to replace the chainsaw blade chain on one of our chainsaws from last night, it hit a couple nails, and so that was replaced today. Those kind of repairs are done in-house, either by myself or a couple little members are mechanics also. Fire extinguisher maintenance, that's a yearly cost, all our fire extinguishers on our equipment have to be inspected every year. New firefighter physical, that is only used if we send somebody to the full-time academy, and we haven't had anybody go in a couple years, so. Postage, that is just if we have to send something certified mail, otherwise, I use the post-it machine here in town hall. Office supplies are basically just paper and printer ink and stuff like that. The dues are for the three associations that the fire chief belongs to, that would be Hampshire County Chief Association, the Western Mass Chief Association, and the Mass State Fire Chief Association. Computer and hardware tech support, in the past, Chief Workman had had a contract with the IT tech from Belcher Town. Right now, I currently have somebody on the department that works for an IT department full-time, this is a regular job, so I have no, if anything, I just pay an hourly wage for him, so I don't, I don't need a contract for that. Again, firefighter equipment, flashlights, axes, shovels, that's stuff, you know, if we have a fire and it gets damaged, you know, we need to replace it. SCBA bottle replacement, I just received a grant for nine replacement bottles. I know Chief Anderson has gone for a, the FEMA grant to replace all the SCOPACs, and with that would become new bottles, but if he doesn't get it, I still need to replace them bottles. It's an NFPA regulation, every 15 years, you have to replace them, so we have actually 20 bottles that are going to be expired in 2025. So this grant, I was able to purchase nine of them. If Chief Anderson's grant doesn't come through, then I would probably apply again next year for more bottles. Hose purchase, for the first time in the department, we had a, I had the hose tested by an outside company. They come in, they unload the trucks, test the hose, re-rack the trucks, they mark every hose, so now we know every piece of hose that we have at the station on the trucks. They, they give a printout of the year, the make, model, the size, so we're pretty good on hose, and we'll have to replace a few lengths that are, I mean, we have hose from 1984 that were still in service, so. SCBA maintenance, we just had that done, that's, again, that's a yearly cost where NFPA requires us to have all of them tested. Air compressor yearly maintenance, that is for filling the SCBA bottles. Currently, we, our compressor was a donation-- a, a donation from Barnes Fire. Um, it's, it's fairly old, but you can still get parts for it. And it, so they come in every quarter and do an air quality test and then once a year they do a, a full service. Um, emergency reporting is all our, uh, electronic permits and inspections. Uh, in the past, Chief Workman was using, uh, paper permits. And this way here, it's all electronic, uh, on the computer. So we, now we have a database on all our inspections. Uh, City of North Hampton hearing officer, um, I haven't, uh, received a new bill for that. I'm not quite sure, um, what that entails. I know, uh, that is basically for if we have to take somebody to, uh, court for a violation of, of a fire or burning or something like that, that's what that's for. Truck pump testing, again, it's an NFPA requirement. We have to have that every year. Um, that's coming up in May. Uh, so all three trucks will be done. Or, well, this year, we're only going to do the two, cause Engine One failed last year. There's no sense to have it fail again this year. Hose testing, I just spoke about. Um, ladder testing, again, um, it's a yearly expense. So that pretty much stays the same. I, we don't, all the ladders we have, we don't, we don't need anymore, so it shouldn't change much. Uh, fuel for vehicles, highway department account, um, again, that was only for the first quarter. Fire vehicles, uh, Wex Bank is our, every vehicle has a credit card. Uh, that is basically for the chief vehicle, um, and the UTV and the pickup, which are all gas. And the highway department doesn't have a gas pump anymore.
Okay.
So any questions on fire expense?
Anybody? Anything? Okay. Nope. No, okay. We may come back around, but go ahead.
Yep. Uh, fire truck maintenance, again, we should be pretty good with that. Um, our biggest expense last year was our tires. Were replaced on Engine Three and Engine Four because they were original from two thousand and five for Engine Three and two thousand and ten for Engine Four. So that outside repair should more line up to the eight thousand than the eleven thousand we spent this previous year. Uh, PMs, they get serviced once a year. Uh, this is for all the vehicles that would account Engine Three, Engine Four, the brush truck, the chief vehicle, the, uh, utility pickup. Um, a lot of the vehicle maintenance we can do in-house as much as possible. State, federal, and NFPA nineteen eleven inspections, uh, those are a yearly expense that we have to, uh, we have to do. Um, like I said, I had the, the last two done. It was, uh, fourteen hundred dollars for two trucks. Where Engine Three, I had that, uh, Chief Workman had that company out of Rhode Island and it was sixteen hundred dollars just for the one because there was a, almost a seven hundred dollar fee just for travel costs. So, um, so that's basically the fire truck maintenance.
And the nineteen eleven inspections are done every year or how often?
Uh, they recommend them every year, yes. So.
Should there be an actual on the, you said there was fourteen hundred dollars? Should there be an actual on the nineteen eleven inspections? I see the.
Yep.
Is there, should there be an actual and the actual is total for the nineteen eleven?
Right. Well, I, I just submitted that warrant.
Okay, I get it.
Last night, so.
Thank you.
Just cross paths with when he developed the budget. Yeah. Okay. Anything? Anybody?
Um, moving on to turnout gear. Uh, last year, I mean, we've, we've gotten fifteen thousand dollars, uh, line item for turnout gear. Again, that's an NFPA requirement that after ten years you have to replace the gear, even though technically there's nothing wrong with them, but if something was to happen and the gear is out of, uh, date, then there would be liability, liability issue. So I have three sets of gear currently ordered. Um, we did a, uh, complete inspection on all our gear, so I have a, a database now.
Sorry.
Database now on all our gear. Everything's dated, uh, entered on the computer.
What, what is the cost for one set of gear per person?
Uh, well, ten thousand two hundred is divided by three, so that's what, a little over three thousand?
Okay.
Uh, about what, thirty-three hundred, thirty-four hundred?
At some point, do you get, uh, don't you get a grant? Weren't there grants that were being received for turnout gear? No? To replace turnout gear from?
There is grants available. That's the firefighter safety equipment grant.
Yeah. I was thinking maybe Chief Workman had, had applied for those in the past perhaps and.
Right. Well, that, that.
He was on the schedule.
That firefighter equipment grant where I bought the bottles, um, you could purchase turnout gear.
I see.
But we already have it on a, on a line item, so that's why I used a grant for the bottles.
Okay. So this is getting out three and then, so you're saying that every year you would want to replace three?
Right. We're on a, we're back on schedule now where, um, again, last year, uh, Chief Workman used the money on other expenses, so we didn't buy any gear last year. But we are, uh, like I said, I did a complete inventory, so now we know, um, next year, you know, we'll have three more sets of gear that are going out of spec that we'll have to replace.
Okay. And just for information, how many total sets of gear do you have?
Uh, that is a good question. We have offhand, I think we have like thirty-two sets of gear.
Or what?
So.
Three a year, ten years, thirty?
Guess so.
So, so again, helmets, boots, gloves, they're all on that ten-year NFPA regulation. So this year we plan on, uh, replacing five helmets. Uh, my helmet, uh, is currently expired. Uh, expired, uh, last year, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, it's not a huge issue because more than likely I won't be going into the fire and having something fall on my head, so. Um, so turnout gear, like I said, it's a line item. We'll, we'll spend all that, no problem.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that, that's not going to change. I mean, it used to be twelve thousand dollars a year a few years back, but with the cost of everything else, the, uh, the account went up to fifteen. Uh, ambulance billing, uh, that is our medical billing company for all ambulance calls. They get, uh, four cents for every dollar that they, uh, they recoup on our, our ambulance expen, our ambulance billing. Um, so that is, you know, we're, we're busy now. I mean, we've done, we're up fifty calls from two years ago. So that expense, uh, it got added to at the special town meeting. It was originally nine thousand. Um, now it's up to eighteen. EMT license and certification, uh, every two years you have to have, uh, your license renewed. So that is, uh, something that we pay the department and personnel. Um, if they don't get reimbursed from their full-time job, it's just one small benefit that we can give them. Uh, we don't pay vacation time, sick time, uh, personal time. So that's about the only benefit they get besides, you know, their regular pay. Fire chief salary, um, obviously I'm not getting the, uh, full chief salary. I only work thirty hours a week right now. Uh, so that shouldn't, uh, be an issue for next year. Uh, you know, that's a contract negotiation, so currently it's a hundred and five. We've only, haven't even used half of it, so. Fire wages, fire and EMS wages, um, the town approved two full-time paramedics back in May, but with no permanent chief, we haven't hired the, uh, personnel. It shouldn't change a whole lot pay-wise for the two full-time because, I mean, we have people working now. The only thing that would change is, uh, you know, the benefits. You know, the full-time people would have sick time, vacation time, overtime. Um, currently now, we have overtime, uh, very rarely. They have to work, uh, a hundred and six hours within a two-week span and that's few and far between. Um, the final thing is EMT standby wage. Uh, I wrote down to eliminate it for the twenty twenty-five budget. We haven't used that account in a, a few years. Um, now that we have people on duty all the time, uh, we don't have a standby need anymore. So.
All right. Good.
Um, basically our, our expense change from twenty-four to twenty-five would be the administrative assistant. Uh, you know, I have to pay half of her, her salary. Um, we don't have the medical IV pumps, if you're going to the, uh, regular budget sheet. That was a one-time expense. That was six thousand dollars. Again, EMT standby, we're not going to be doing that anymore, so that's a two thousand dollar saving. And then also last year, we had to pay for the, uh, fire EMS department study. Uh, that was fifteen thousand, so we don't have to, uh, that's not an expense I will need for twenty twenty-five. So our, our budget should go down, uh, about a little over eleven thousand dollars if, if everything stays the same.
Okay. Good. Well, I'm assuming that we probably have some questions around wages, so let me kind of focus people in that, that neighborhood since we haven't hired the two paramedics yet.
Right.
Are they budgeted in this though or?
They were budgeted last year in twenty twenty-four, so that's why I kept that the same.
All right.
Uh, it's hard to.
They're under the EMS wage line?
Right. EMS and fire wages. Um, because in twenty twenty-three, before we agreed for those positions, um, it was four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, la, this year and next year, it's, uh, twenty twenty-four was five hundred thousand for the cost of the two full-time people. Um, same with fire wages. Uh, fire wages were a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in twenty twenty-three. This year it was a hundred and seventy-one, so that went up a little bit. Again, it, it was hard to figure out the budget for that because, you know, we don't have them people. We don't, I don't know what their pay rate's going to be, how many hours they're going to work, how many hours overtime they're going to work. So.
But the intent will be that those will be full-time. So right now, just for, again, people that may not be aware, we've got, when we have the full-time chief hired on, that will be the one full-time position plus two paramedics are intended to be full-time. So we'll end up with three full-time.
Right.
Positions.
Three full-time and then the, uh, administrative assistant is a full-time position, but it's, it's basically part-time for us.
Right. Shared with the police department.
Right. And then, uh, if we go forward with the fire prevention, uh, with East Hampton, uh, there's going to be a, a set cost on that. The first years, you know, the grant takes care of it, but then after that, there'll be a cost involved on that. Uh, but that's still up in the air because obviously we don't have the grant yet and we're not, you know, how many inspections they do for, he does for Southampton or she does for Southampton. So that would be, you know, a twenty twenty-six budget item.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Questions? Anybody? Yeah, Scott, please.
Uh, with the air quality test just coming in, should some of the money that you realize is savings on be transferred into building maintenance just to address those issues that might come up?
Say that again, what?
So with the air quality test just coming in a couple days ago?
The air quality test was, uh, no charge from the state.
Right. But to address some of the issues that might come up.
Right. The recommendations, there's really, you know, I, I had set up this budget request before we got the air quality test back. So, um, you know, hopefully the, uh, expenses won't, you know, kill my building expense budget, but I might, you know, in the future you might have to move money around. So, yeah, the biggest thing were the doors. Um, another thing that we already budgeted for was a, uh, uh, air quality machines or, uh, air filter machines, air exchangers. Um, so we were waiting for the air quality test to come back to decide which way we wanted to go, whether we wanted to put something on the trucks or just have a air exchanger up on the ceilings. So that's something I'll, I guess I'll be working with you now that Ed's leaving today, so.
Something like that. Okay. Good. Eric? Other questions? Yes?
So, how are we doing on covering shifts?
Covering shifts is always a challenge. Um, it, it, lately it's been pretty good. Um, we're not, we need to be twenty-four, seven, two people on each shift. Um, we're not that. Um, the biggest problem is, you know, somebody will be scheduled for a shift and then they'll, will get held over at their full-time fire position. So that leaves that shift open. Um, you, the biggest problem with that is they don't know usually till that day or that morning that they have to stay. A lot of, a lot of the members, they'll either work for us and then go right to their other permanent fire job, like East Hampton, Westfield, or they'll work Westfield today and work for us tomorrow. And just like everybody else, you know, if the guys call out sick in Westfield, they have to stay. You know, they're, it's a mandatory stay. Where for us, all these guys are per diem, they're here because they want to be, you know, I mean, we can't hold them. You know, their, their union contracts, you know, they have to stay. Where, you know, we're not union, so they're here. I mean, they're not volunteer to be here. They're getting paid, but they're here because they want to be.
It's not their priority.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's not their priority. They can't say no to the full-time job.
Right. I mean, the only priority right now is, is the fire chief would be the full-time position. Once we get the two people, then that, that, hopefully that'll help a lot, you know, whether they're, you know, they're on their regular shift or, you know, they want to pick up an overtime shift, something like that.
Right.
Um, I mean, ideally you would want to see four full-time people. Um, that way, you know, you'd be able to cover more shifts. Um, but, you know, we, we haven't had, filled the positions yet, so we don't know how much it's going to cost, whether, you know, to go for two more people would be the ideal situation to have four. That way you could have two on pretty much all the time, you know, full-time.
Right. Well, right, because they, they wouldn't work the same shift though.
Um, no, they would probably work, you know, four on, four off.
Meaning both paramedics aren't going to work together?
What's that?
Both paramedics won't work together.
Right. The two full-timers probably would not work together enough.
Because we, you could have a paramedic with an EMT.
Right.
And still respond, so therefore, yeah.
And then the chief, um, now Chief Workman never wanted to, but I mean, I, if I become the chief, I, you know, I don't have an issue going on an ambulance call. I, I have medical equipment in the chief vehicle now, which there was never in the past.
Yeah. And I know, um.
I also, uh, you know, if there's an open shift and I'm available, you know, I respond.
Yeah. I know the original game plan, when, when we appointed you interim, we're the ones who told you not to hire anybody, but I don't think we envisioned it going this far.
Yeah.
Right.
So I would probably support if you came forward with a plan of, I think I want to hire and here's how I want to staff it.
Okay.
For us to consider.
Yep.
I think, I think we would.
Yeah. I mean, I think as, as we're getting a little bit closer to however we're going to end up with a, with a permanent chief, I think we may as well start.
Right. I think it would be a good idea to get the ball rolling now.
Yeah, I agree.
Sketch it out and then, you know, if everybody buys into it, then we can probably move forward.
Yeah. What I, what I plan on doing, you know, with that was I was going to reach out to, you know, Westfield, East Hampton, see what they require for, you know, I mean, obviously they're union, so it's, there's some difference. But, you know, I'm not going to make it my own. I mean, that, you know, the system is out there.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So, so then again, the goal is to have at least a paramedic and an EMT on. So, so again, the goal is to have at least a paramedic and an EMT on, on.
On every shift.
On every shift.
Right. Currently, right now, we work 10 hour day shift, 8 to 6 PM. And then the overnight is 6 PM to 8 AM. So it's 10 hour days, 14 hour nights. So.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions? Feel free. And this is, I mean, for anybody who's here and listening in, we don't have, you know, we're, we're right now just hearing the presentations from the various departments. At some point, we'll end up putting all this, all this together and trying to match it against revenues or projected revenues and trying to see what this, you know, animal's really going to look like. So we're just trying to hear from them at this point in time, what the, what the rationale is for the, for the budget request that they're putting for us. So if we don't have lots of questions right now, we may come back to you. So don't, don't assume that just because we're not asking a lot tonight, that there may not be some in the future. But if, yeah, John.
Well, I don't have a question for the chief unless he knows it, but do we have, do we know where we are on ambulance receipts?
Hmm.
And like where we are today, whatever, however far along we are, whether it's January or whatever, and to that same period last year, are we comparable or no?
Yeah, we're looking at and now and whether it's a calendar year or a fiscal year, bringing in about $300,000.
About $300,000?
$300,000. Yeah. And, and, and this is just crude, but when Bradley and I were working on the revenue side of the budget, this year, we had gone up and utilized 125,000 from 100,000 in the past for ambulance receipts towards EMS expenses. My quick back of the hand calculation, and then you've got to play with, do you want to leave some in the ambulance receipts too, was to actually go to 175,000 to be used towards EMS expenses and in addition to that, take a look at putting 100 to 125,000 into the stabilization account to purchase the next ambulance.
Yeah. Which, then that leads me to my, my next set of questions. So let's, let's assume that we get the grant for the tanker.
Right.
Okay. So now that comes on board. Even if all moves forward and we build this public safety complex building as fast as we can, we're going to be here for another year or so.
Oh, at least, yeah.
So how, how would you, how would you, how would you station the vehicles?
Well, the, obviously the new tanker would stay up here and I'd have to move one of the engines down to the other station. And then the problem would be, I mean, there's space down there for two fire trucks.
Yep.
The problem will be, like this winter, you know, I had the open bay, so that's why I put that trailer down there for the winter, just to keep it out of the weather. So that would either, you know, we would either have to leave it outside or find another home for it for the winter.
The trailer?
The trailer with the UTV in it, yes.
And then Ed just mentioned, touched on the ambulances. How many years out before we have to think about replacing one of them?
Well, the A1, our primary ambulance is a 2018. A2 is a 2008. I was going to put it in for capital expense this year, but I held off till probably next year just because of the public safety complex. I didn't want to be asking for too much.
Okay.
Again, if we eventually down the road, if we do get four people on, it would be even better to have them, you know, if they work together because a lot of our calls lately are where it's more and more where our first ambulance is out and then there's another ambulance call. So that revenue for that ambulance call is going to Westfield, East Hampton. So eventually the goal is, I mean, it's future goal would be to have four people on, you know, 24 hours a day. That's why we put in for, for the public safety complex, I requested five bunk rooms. So that's what the five would be, would be four and a, and an officer on duty.
Okay. Anything else?
And then just, sorry, on the, on the wages here, and I understand what you're doing withholding them where they are. In the past, we've often been blamed for not adding two and a half percent increases. Do you think you'll, you'll still be able to manage?
If I, if I do become the permanent chief, the payroll currently is, it's even mind boggling for me, the, the wages on how Chief Workman did it. Because in the past, we'd always get the raise with the rest of the town, but then he changed it and he'll, he would hire somebody and their wage would be up here and somebody that's already working would be down here. So I would like, eventually I would like to at least get everybody, you know, at the same rate.
Mm-hmm.
You know? But, you know, that's, that's a future thing, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. And just following on that, is it fair to say that you've got a, a basic wage for a paramedic because of those qualifications and a basic wage?
Right.
For an EMT and, but depending on their years of experience, they would get, there would, there would be variation.
That, that's how.
Amongst the EMTs.
That's how Chief Workman set up his pay scale, which was approved 2022 by the select board, I guess, is what the paper says.
Yeah.
And it all depends if you're strictly just an EMT. If you're an EMT with the state qualifications firefighter one and two, you would get a bump in pay. Officers get a bump in pay. So if you're just strictly a firefighter, a call firefighter, there's one rate. If you go to Hampshire County has, it's called the Hampshire Six, it's a basic firefighter course. We send everybody, everybody is certified Hampshire County. That's one of our qualifications for being on the fire department. They usually have them classes twice a year, or six classes on a Sunday. So as soon as we hire, you know, a new, new person and they haven't had it, then we send them to that.
Okay. Yeah. Dan?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of just working over the, oh, yes. Sorry.
The echo in this room is not very good. The acoustic in the room in general, so just so that.
Thank you.
Everybody's here?
I'm just working through the, the fundamentals or the high level picture of all the, all the data we have in front of us. And one part that's confusing me, so hopefully you can just point it out quickly to me, is, you know, all the columns and all the data we walked through, they all have a negative amount, at least projected for 2024.
Right.
So if they're all under what we estimated for 2024, then the thing that I'm catching here is how come the money we're asking for 2025 isn't less?
Well, I just, basically I just kept it the same as what 2024 was. I wasn't asking for anything more.
So Dan, are you interpreting that to be a shortfall?
No, no, I'm interpreting that we, we were.
It's actually.
More money.
We should have.
Surplus.
There should be a surplus.
It's a surplus that's in there.
Right.
He's not going to spend $50,000 so far.
Right. So shouldn't, I mean, next year, we shouldn't ask for, we should ask for $50,000 less if our money that we're spending this year worked out to be not so much forecasting for the future? I mean, that's what, that's kind of what I was trying to get to.
Right.
This paperwork.
So in, in here, where you're saying like under fire expenses, you're not going to spend $14,940 as an example.
Right.
So Dan's question is, why should we give that to you again next year if you're not going to spend it, if we could reallocate that to another department that needs it?
Um, that's, that's up to you guys, I guess.
But I guess your answer would be you're interim and you haven't implemented all the full changes that you want to.
Right.
So you'd like a little buffer.
Right.
Going into next.
I mean, this is my first budget, so my first budget meeting.
Yeah.
So basically, that's why I kept pretty much everything the same. As best of my knowledge, you know, we, most of our accounts, we haven't hit 50%. Even, you know, going by Bradley's sheet that he sends out every couple of weeks, we're just a few at 50%, you know? And I mean, the year's more than half over.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whatever we don't use, it would just go back into the, into the general fund.
Yeah. Ed, please, yeah.
And I'd just like to follow up on the question or comment that Scott had made is now that we do have possession of that air qual- quality test, there are some things in there that should be addressed fairly soonly. So, and yes, the chief did not have that when he actually submitted this budget, but I would think that, you know, the select board and the finance committee would probably think about asking him to take a look at what some of those costs are and, you know, whether they should be adjusted within this submittal.
Right. And at a, at a quick read through on the fire, on the quality, air quality testing, if I'm recalling the, the air quality testing in the trailer came out pretty good.
Right.
And it's really just in the station itself.
Right.
Which, so there's at least a little bit of a silver lining.
Right. There are, like I said, the biggest things were the, the doors going into the office in the day room, they're not sealed tight. And then the, in the past, we've had some roof leaks in that back office section. I got up there and sealed them. We haven't had any leak lately. But in the chief's office, the panels had started falling down and when they fell down, you know, there's mold up there. So I mean, that would have to be addressed. One of the things they said was to either get a company in to clean carpets or just remove them.
Mm-hmm. They've been there for quite a while.
They've been in there a long time, yes.
Yeah, actually, one of the things in that report is that they do not recommend carpeting in public safety facilities, whether it be fire EMS or police, just because of the carcinogens that come.
Sure.
May come back in from fire EMS and contaminants that may come back from police investigations.
Right. Our, our department policy is no turnout gear in them back rooms. But, I mean, you're still got to walk through the bay and, you know, you're taking the gear off and you're not, we don't have, we have a shower in the trailer, but I mean, you know, you can't really decon after every fire call.
Right.
Where the new public safety complex would have all that if needed.
So a follow up question.
I'm sorry, just a quick load of, that's all.
A follow up question to my question previously is, we have the columns for the fiscal year 2020, 24, that would be the, the budgeted and the 2025 fiscal year proposed. We have that third column, the 2024 projected.
The which one?
The 24 projected, yeah.
Do we have, do we have that total? Like, I don't see the total anywhere. That's the part of, what, what does that come out to?
Of the third column?
Yeah. The 2024 projected. So we can see where we think we're going to end up in 2024.
Well, isn't that the part in, in orange there?
But it's not totaled. I don't see it, at least on the papers I have.
Well, on the, on the top part though, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The FY24 in, in what John was referring to earlier on is lines, whatever, three through 16 or something on our spreadsheet here, the very top part. So all of that FY24, the total budget is 974,500 and then the FY25 request, if you will, is 989,342.
Yep.
And the main, the main difference there is that shared admin person, right?
So the data, the piece of data I'm looking for is in this analysis, there's all, there's all this, what we spent so far and an estimate based on 2023 of what was spent for the rest of the year. Where's, where's that totaled up?
Right. I didn't, I don't have that projected.
Yeah.
Total. I didn't, I didn't even think of that.
That would be good because that can kind of tell us at least what we estimate for this year, the cost.
Right. I mean, I have it broken down to each.
Yep.
Separate account, but I didn't, I didn't total it, no.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be good to add together.
I ran that quickly.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dan.
And if you look at that one column being the three months actual and the remainder expected, it looks to be 690,000.
600,000.
Most of the difference being the way it shows from not having those full time positions.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll assume that if we assume those roles were filled, like the fire chief, obviously we know we're going to fill that and we have that, have the other reels, sorry, the other roles filled in. Can you, can you run that hypothetical for me?
Well, if the param, if the paramedic, if the paramedics are going to be about maybe 67, 69,000 a pop, for simple math, let's say it's 70, there's 140 there.
Yeah.
The difference in the chief's pay is probably two thirds. Are you getting roughly, well, no, because you're only getting 30 hours.
Well, I'm at, I'm at 30 hours and I'm not at the full chief pay rate.
Right. Yeah.
So call that another 40. There's 200,000.
There's a couple hundred thousand.
105,000, if you broke that down to, you know, 40 hours a week, 2,080 hours, it's, it's like $50 an hour. And currently I, I get 3750 as chief, so.
Yeah.
So there's a cost, a big cost savings right there.
If we, if we go with the top section, line 17, where he's asking for 989 to an expiring 974, it's only a 1.52% increase.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But that does not build in any costs in terms of the, the air quality test report? That's not factored in here right now?
Correct. Well, so my interpretation of that is I look down the bottom and the areas that are underspent, I mean, I can't, I don't know how many doors there are, but right now in building maintenance, you're, you're not planning on spending $3,900.
Right.
Will $3,900 take care of those doors, a one time thing?
Mm-hmm.
And get them done? Well, you get without the data points, I don't know.
Maybe.
Right.
And I'm just basing that on the replacement of the door and the police station with this dispatch change that one door was close to almost $5,000 installed.
Yeah.
Right.
That was a different type of door though, right?
Right.
You couldn't break through.
Right. I mean, we don't need that kind of door. We just need a door that seals tight, that's all.
But even if it's half of that, that's 2,500.
Yeah.
And there's 39 there, you know?
Yeah. So anyways, yeah.
And, and the, the town already budgeted for the air exchangers for the station. So.
That was part of the capital expense, right?
Right. From last year.
From the annual town meeting.
Right.
And we're just waiting to see what, what makes the most sense. Like you said originally.
Right. We were waiting for the air quality report.
Right. Because I think originally the idea had been to have some sort of an air exchanger type thing on the fire trucks themselves.
Right.
Versus perhaps something like you mentioned in the ceiling or somewhere.
Yeah.
That we may or may not be able to take with us.
Right.
Right.
Supposedly it was planned to be able to be moved, but.
Yeah. Which we don't. So all that really needs investigation going forward, but, you know, we definitely knew at the time back in, in the May town meeting that, you know, the, the working conditions and, and all of that within the fire station are horrendous in terms of, you know, the air quality there. So we wanted to do whatever we could to put money aside to have some improvements for fire safety for the firefighters.
So at least my, my analysis shows that if we were to keep the salaries for 2025 and assume the other items were to come in as our estimated budget based on the 2024 numbers to match that, I see somewhere around a 50K reduction we could apply here. This is something to keep in mind as we move forward with things. Keeping the staff, but looking to try to match the actuals for 2024 and the actuals to try to match the actuals for 2024 and the actuals and the estimate of 2024 and 2025 for everything else.
Yeah. And I, yeah, and it may show up more in Bradley's overall spreadsheet, you know, every department spreadsheet where the, that shows the year-to-year change better, perhaps?
I don't disagree with your numbers, Dan. I just, I'm, knowing that last year, we did an override of X amount to put into here, that until we can confirm that every shift is covered around the clock in accordance with that override, I wouldn't want to pull money out.
Yeah. I mean, I'm making the assumption that on fiscal year 2025, 2025, day one, we've hired, filled all those positions, if we're going to, so I, I still think I'm being cautious in this.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, Donna, yeah.
The other thing to note is that if you, you know, if you try to fill the budget that's too close to what it actually is, then you won't have no free cash. So, you know, you've got, I mean, you want to be obviously responsible with how you build your budget and what money gets spent on, but you don't want to be cutting every line too close and not have any room here.
Right. What, what is this free cash you speak of? What's the last time we had?
Yep. It's, it's a careful surgery we need, we would have to do, so.
I think the other comment that I would make is, even with leaving the salary lines as they were originally budgeted for, with the full-time positions that were approved, that assumes no cost of labor increases.
Right.
So that's the other thing, is if, you know, if you fill those day one, they may not be priced for at the order.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point.
Yeah, quite true, yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this? If not, I think.
No, the only thing that I don't have a, well, I do have a comment, I guess. I will say to Chief Vasoli that this is my third time seeing the fire department budget. I can understand this one. Thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you for, for walking us through it.
All right, thank you.
I know, and thank you, too, for your first time putting it together. I think you did a good job putting it together and understanding all the, all the different costs and line items. So thank you for doing that.
Here's what I would ask for the budget for 2025, and it's a little harder, this ask is a little harder than what we've done of kind of taking it, taking the previous year and, and using that as the baseline. Going back and thinking about what's going to happen next year and try to look at the line items and anticipate, you know, are they going to be about the same? Which ones are going to go up? Which ones are going to go down? Try to, try, try to forecast.
Right.
It's not an easy thing.
Well, I mean, the biggest thing with us is, you know, last year, we, we did 180 more calls.
Yeah.
And I mean, yeah, a lot of them, all of them were ambulance transports where, you know, we collected revenue, but we still have to pay the people that come in to work them calls, or, you know, people on duty.
Sure.
And that's, that's wear and tear on the ambulance, wear and tear on equipment.
Extra fuel, all that stuff. It all, it all adds up, yeah.
And I mean, this year, we're already up, like I said, we're at 140 calls. This time last year, we're at 161.
Yep. So, but I look at it from this perspective. With the level of staffing and the equipment that we have and the budget that we have, we've been able to handle 161 calls at this point. And we, so far, we've spent less, right? So I would, I would think that we could handle that call volume again, so that we can assume the call volume is going to go up some amount, but we, it seems like we haven't met the threshold where our call volume is pushing us to, to have to make our costs higher. Like, we're still within the margin of safety. I, just from, I don't know, that's, that's, I have no data to back that up, but it's my, what I'm.
It's an observation, anyway.
Observation, I should say.
Conversely to that, I will just say, if, we're, we're missing runs right now. So theoretically, if, if we got to a point where all those shifts were full, and, and again, you're going to get double ambulance calls that you can't meet, but if all of a sudden, a call you're missing, you can take, that's going to jump up, which is also going to drive your costs up for your medical supplies and your billing. So just keep that in the back of your mind, too.
So what, what happens now when we only have one person on staff and we get a call?
We pay East Hampton.
We pay East Hampton.
We pay East Hampton $500 a call.
Right. It's either, depending on where the call is in town, we call East Hampton or Westfield.
Yeah.
And they, and they keep the revenue. If there is a run, they keep the revenue.
If they do, or transport, they keep the revenue.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear, we have not yet met our service level that we brought to the voters last spring. That is to have two fully qualified people on staff all the time.
Right, right.
So we're accomplishing more than you might expect, but we've not ramped up to the level that we projected was necessary and funded by the voters.
Yep, Doug, yep.
Regarding calls that you weren't able to, to meet that were referred out to East Hampton, do we have a count on that? How many calls we miss?
Say that again, what?
So, so we don't have, we don't have the EMT and the paramedic or the two paramedics for a shift, and East Hampton has had to respond to a million calls. How, how often do we estimate? How often has happened this year?
How often does East Hampton come?
Yes.
How much have we paid out, or how much we paid out to East Hampton?
Um, well, this, this past month would be January, it was $3,500. So that's.
Seven calls?
Whatever.
Seven, seven calls.
Seven calls, for that month, anyway.
Now, again, that's not because all of them, you know, we weren't, had anybody on duty. Some of them could have been where our ambulance was already out.
Sure.
And then, you know, there was a second call.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good, all right. Well, thanks, chief. I think we'll, we'll let you go. Much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich, thank you. I know you agonized over that and spent a lot of time with it. You came over and asked a lot of questions, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You, too.
He's a spreadsheet jockey from way back.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. I'm going to try to go up there so I have some room to spread out.
Okay, all right. And just, you know, just, this microphone really goes to the East Hampton media, but in this room, we all have to speak a little bit louder so we can all hear each other. This microphone does nothing for this room. It's just for East Hampton media. So just everybody, just, especially when you're sitting there where we can't see you, Randall. Although I know you have a very loud voice, so that shouldn't be a problem.
I'll try to project from the diaphragm.
That is the dead spot in the room, right there.
Yeah, I know there is a dead spot in this room.
Again, you're still connected, so fine. Then you could, should we have a go over, click on via?
Hey, Joy, I wasn't intending to ignore you. Did you have any questions at all? Sorry.
No, no, I've just been following along.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Now, it's asking the room name. You got to enter 192 dot 168.
19.
2 dot 168.
168.
Dot 10.
10.
Dot 153.
10, 5, 3, enter.
Join, whatever it is says.
Join.
Okay, Randall Kemp. Now, enter room code, and that's 7779.
77 and a 9.
Yep. Join. Then you just, you should get in there. It's green. Click on the green tab to present, and then open up your document.
Okay.
And you go to.
So this mic is on, but I, I'm also projecting to the room, right? So I think you all got the documents I sent out. I tried to give you a really good idea through the three-page narrative, as well as the backup spreadsheets where my budget comes from. So I'm going to go through it pretty quickly in the respect of everyone's time. And then if you have questions, I'll stop at the end of each section so people can, if they have any questions. Does that sound like a good way to progress?
Sure.
Okay.
You have your documents.
Yep.
Okay, so, start with, all right, let's start with highway, I'll start with highway superintendent line. Employment agreement has not yet been negotiated, so that is yet to be determined. The assistant to the highway superintendent line reflects 20 hours per week for 52.2 weeks of my assistant, who works for the highway department 20 hours per week. I went by the guidance and brought her up to the next step, and that is how I calculated that line. General highway line is a little more hard, a little harder to calculate, so I, I created this spreadsheet for it. Basically, I have four existing positions. We weren't giving guidance on union personnel, but I put those who were able to up to the next step in anticipation of having some sort of increase. The contract is not negotiated as yet.
Correct. And it expires on June 30th.
And expires on June 30th, so.
And we have received that request to bargain.
Right. So these, these numbers are a placeholder. They're a step up for the three people that were still on the scale. And it reflects 33 weeks of general highway wages, and then over on this side, you can see the, the calculation for the 19 weeks of winter roads wages. Overtime estimates are based on previous year's data of, during the summer, we get called in for trees in the road like we did last night, or other flooding, road flooding, things like that. We've been in a trend using more overtime. Winter hours have not gone up too much, but they have increased slightly. Zoom in a little bit.
Yeah.
I think I sent you guys all these, these spreadsheets?
We don't have all of them.
We don't have this one.
You don't have, I didn't send you a.
You may have sent it to the town, but it didn't make it to the select board.
Oh, I see, okay. So what I did here is I took everybody's overtime, took an average per person, in addition to the call-in plow drivers, and that's how I came up with a general number in general highway overtime and winter overtime, which is on this, projected hours. Makes sense? Does anyone have any questions on wages so far?
Just, I'm, sorry, on the open positions, are those budgeted at what you think a new hire would be, or would it be?
So, I put it over here. I calculated them mid-range.
Okay.
That would give me some, I mean, I'd have to work within the budget I'm, I'm given or appropriated, so I'd have to figure that out. But for the purpose of this calculation, it's basically mid-range on the salary range in the current contract.
Yep.
If that makes sense to everyone.
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to expenses?
Sure, whatever you want.
Okay. General highway expenses, I guess, comes first. I've tracked expenses over a number of years now, and my top is not frozen for some reason. FY14 through FY23 are all actual costs. FY24 is the request, and then FY25 is a request. And I can send this out if anybody wants to before our next meeting. If you didn't receive this, I put my rationale for where I, my request numbers over here, they're based on either averages or projections, or if the cost has gone up, cable, you know, cable went up, but it's a known cost. I have a lot of unknown costs. We don't ever know how many storms we're going to have, where the price of asphalt or diesel is going, and those can reflect a lot of, a lot of ups and downs in my budget, mostly up. I guess I said we were going to start at general highway expenses, but my top line is not frozen, so I hope you get generally what, what everything is. It's for pavement, chip seal, crack seal, overlays, line painting subcontractor for the traffic control, the yellow lines and white lines on the road, catch basin cleaning, catch basin repair, culverts and pipe, gravel, stone. I don't know if you can read all this.
Randall, is there a way to hide those middle columns so we could make this bigger, so we can actually see any of that?
Sure. How many years you, do you want to see any of the past years?
I don't think we need to go back to 2014, no.
23 is all we care.
Couple, couple of years will be just fine.
Oh, 22, because there is a lot of variability in these.
Yeah, but we'd, we'd wanted to make these spreadsheets a little bit simpler and more reasonable to follow. Thank you. That's going to be a little bit better to follow.
Okay. So now I don't have to read them off. You can all read what these are. I'll scroll down.
But, you know, talk, talk about anything that's, you know, changing, or, you know, a big jump that you've noticed over the last couple of years, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, we've got the contract, right, with the, I'm forgetting who it is, the folks that do all your purchasing?
ForCOG.
Franklin COG. That, my estimates for my work plan for this year have not gone out. I haven't, I haven't finalized my work plan. I'm working on it currently, but that's Chapter 90 money, so it doesn't, it isn't affected by this anyway.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Scott. Scott just sent around the forecast file here.
Oh, that's what the ding was.
General highway not only includes the things for actual road construction, but, well, this mow agreement went down because it's expired, so we won't, we won't have that anymore. That's a, that's one of the few things that went down. Police detail for the roads that we're obligated to have police for traffic control when we're out there, incidental tree work. A lot of that is under the tree warden budget, but there are some instances where either he doesn't have budget or I need something done, so I like to carry a little bit for tree work. Beaver control, we have several places in town where we have beaver dams that threaten to flood the roads. I try to take care of them through non-lethal means, and I've been able to get some grant money for that, but maintenance agreements on those pond leveling structures or beaver deceivers, we have a contract with beaver guy in town. It also includes uniforms per union contract, safety equipment, staff professional development, training, and continuing education required for some of the licenses that my staff maintain. Professional associations, those are mostly the ones that I'm a member of, Tri-County Highway Superintendents Association and Mass Highway Association. It's for dues and meetings. We just mentioned Franklin Council of Governments. This line item is all of the organizations. Greater Boston Police Council is a consolidated purchasing program for vehicles. So that's those sort of things necessary for procurement compliance. And then mileage and tolls, equipment rental, petroleum compliance for our diesel dispensing system at the highway department. That's by contract and by Department of Environmental, Department of Environmental Control. I can't think of what D.
Protection.
Protection, thank you.
Is this the last year we'll be paying that?
Um, no, well, that depends, Stephen. We, well, I have a, do you want me to get into the capital requests? Because our underground, this is kind of complex as it is, but we, we may be modifying that going forward, but I have budgeted it as if it's not going to happen. So if it happened, we would be able to ship that money somewhere else.
And just explain that to everybody.
Okay, so a replacement of the underground storage tank, diesel tank that we currently have, it's past its lifespan, and I have on capital request for an above-ground storage tank. So the, the compliance cost will not be zero, but it should be less. There are less compliance costs with having an above-ground storage tank opposed to an underground storage tank.
Right. And that's compared to outsourcing and traveling out of town for all your diesel fill-ups.
Right, right, which is the alternative and not one that I would recommend.
Yep. But I would avoid that line item entirely at some point.
Or reduce it, at least.
Engineering, this is for, I've been using this more and more as we encounter problems for which I want a second opinion or require engineering judgment, small engine repairs, other expenses, tools, cones, grass seed, things like that. And last year, we put an earmark for winter overruns in the general highway for reasons I can get into when we get to winter roads. Does anyone have any question about general highway expenses?
Well, my, so your bottom line, you're asking for $4,993 more year-over-year on that line item, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So you've got on the, on the top heading, just to be clear, so the FY24 request at the top of that column in the yellow, that's, that's the current budget, though, right?
It's not the current budget. It was the ask. I wasn't, I wasn't, down here is what, one of these numbers is, I hid, I hid the column that has what these are.
So what, what we will do at some point in time is take a look at actuals of the expenses against that budget, right?
Yes. Well, actuals spent right, right now, I think you, most of the people on the select board already know that the variability in this budget, I, we always end up shuffling around at the end of the year to cover some overspent cost. For example, this year, we have.
Your extremely expensive expense account for repairs is.
Yeah, we ran out of our machinery maintenance expenses in November because of some pretty costly repairs, and we will, we're continuing to spend, but we're tracking it in general highway, and that's, this is simply how our budget has to go. We have things we have to cover, and it takes away from our ability to repair roads sometimes, so. I think I articulated that a little more in the budget narrative, hopefully. We will move on to machinery maintenance, since that's a good segue.
Right.
We have an aging fleet, we have replaced equipment in the last couple of years, but if anybody saw my capital requests, the capital requests that were not funded last year were just kicked onto this year. So we have quite a bit of capital requests, and machinery maintenance is one of the reasons why I'm pushing for replacement of machinery. The older it gets, the more costly it is to repair. So machinery maintenance, all of these are pretty self-explanatory, we have to pay for vehicle inspections, welding gas rental, parts washer service, hydraulic and motor oil, and then the big one is the truck repairs, and that cost is all over the place depending on what breaks.
Sweeper was one of the big ones this year, correct?
Sweeper and transmission on the backhoe loader, as well as a lot of brake work on single-axle dump trucks.
Yeah, I wonder if there's a way we can start, work to reduce the variability in our maintenance by looking at what we have for equipment and trying to predict which items may have failures coming up? Do we have some type of?
I mean, that's my capital, that's my capital program, we want to replace older equipment, but we.
You can attend your vehicle replacement.
We kick it down the road, and so I need to keep them running, so that.
That's why you're such a very low revenue.
Absolutely, yes. Because we don't, we don't.
We don't have enough funds to fund all the capital requests that come in.
Our equipment goes well past its usable life.
So what you're saying makes a lot of sense, based on not funding the maintenance costs you're going to have.
Yes.
At large, what you want to call fixing fees.
Yeah, I mean, I think mechanical maintenance is, is always going to be quite variable, but I think you can try and control it by keeping, keeping equipment within its useful lifespan.
So out of the, out of the, out of the things that might need replacing, what would be, what's your top two or whatever that you've got on a capital issue?
I don't have two, I had, I think I had five last year, and did any of them get funded, Ed? I don't remember.
Yeah.
Like heating system got funded?
You had one truck that then got.
Oh, there was one, there was one that was approved a couple of years ago that you needed more money for.
Yeah, that wasn't on capital, that was on a special town.
Right.
Town meeting, was it through capital?
Well, yeah, originally it was through capital.
Well, it was a pickup truck, I mean, I can pull up, depending on how much time you want to go, I can pull up the capital.
We don't see the capital yet, because it goes to the committee, so we, I don't know what your, if, you know.
Well, there's no money in capital, because free cash.
Right, there's no money there yet, right, yeah.
It's not like you're going to get anything.
We're in the same boat we were last year.
Every year.
We have no, no free cash, so.
Out of your equipment, what is your, the worst thing that you want to get replaced as your highest priority? Is it the sweeper, is it something else?
It was the sweeper, but I know there's an effort to.
What's going on with the schools?
To go with the utility for that, so we're trying to repair the sweeper, ant contract out, because it, it's nice to have a sweeper when you need it, and not have to call the vendor and have them say, oh, we will get there in a week, but I need the sweeper for prep work to have a road paved, and I need it tomorrow.
Got it, yes.
Can I ask one question?
Sure, absolutely.
I may be simply embarrassed, I just want to make sure I'm looking at this apples to apples.
Sure.
So the FY24 request was what we presented and requested last budget round.
Yes.
That's not necessarily what was approved, do we know?
Correct. So, if I can just bear with me a minute?
Sure.
If I unfreeze these.
If you look at Bradley's spreadsheet, it should show that.
That's not what I meant to do. Okay, see this, these gray? I try and pack a lot of information on these sheets, it's just the way I do it. So my budget, if you see underneath here in the gray, my budget request, and this is what was appropriated at a town meeting, this, the bold was what was actually spent, but for, for the, the ask, and actually I did get what I asked for last year in mechanical maintenance.
The amended budget request.
But I've already unspent it this year.
Okay, but the amended budget, approved budget for road machinery expenses is 96025.
Yep, and that's what you had approved for?
That was approved for.
Yes, for last year.
Right.
Previous years of the actuals, this is actual spent, this is what I asked for, and this is what was appropriated, if you follow me. That's why there's so much data on here.
An upward trend.
Yeah.
Right, so what you're looking at now, from what I'm seeing here, is about an $8,000 increase.
Yeah, right.
To 104,350.
Yeah, I mean, the, the overspending we have this year, I don't expect that to happen next, the following, FY25, so, you know, and I come about the total.
Yep, go ahead.
By three-year, you can see where I got some of these, my request numbers, three-year averages, two-year averages, five-year averages.
Yep.
So, I mean, looking at this, you know, the year-over-year ask is a 6.85% increase, but I guess I do have questions on wages, because under general highway wages, it's showing a $13,624 increase, but if you held it.
We had to cover some other overspend, that happens every year, we had to move it at the end of the year.
Yeah, but that shouldn't, how would that?
Wait, what are you saying?
Yeah, highway wages, when you went through the explanation, you said you used this year's hourly rate, you only moved, okay, you only moved up those that had room within the steps, because the contract's open.
Okay.
So those that moved up within steps, that represents $13,624 of additional money needed?
Yeah, we're looking at the.
Are you looking at this?
Sounds right.
What about that, this number here, 230, yeah, it's $615.
It goes in 244, but, okay.
Yeah, it was 237 last year, 230, no, sorry, wrong, 230, right?
Yeah. But I just answered it myself, because Randall did say there were some people there that are, have room on the scale, and you moved them up.
These three people, these three people went up to the next.
Yeah.
To the next step.
But the first one is frozen.
Yes.
Because the contract hasn't been settled yet.
No, well, well, there's no more, he's on maximum set.
Right, and the contract's off. So in theory, that'll get addressed during the contract negotiation.
Could, could, yeah, but I wanted to give you, I didn't want to give you the same number as last year, when I, we can all presume that it's.
So really, the only big ask that you're asking year-over-year in here is the, is an additional $40,000 in the MS4 storm water management program. Otherwise, your budget's relatively flat.
As we look at what, yeah, as we look at what Bradley's plugged in, but, yeah, okay. Scott, you had a question?
Just looking at the machinery maintenance expenses, I know that you have the mechanic position open for a while now, how much, if that position was filled, how much would you be able to keep internally versus sending work out to vendors?
That's a good question, that I don't have a really good answer for. It's going to depend on the, you know, technical virtuosity of whoever gets hired, their ability, because I'm sure there's still going to be things that need to be sent out. The more advanced that equipment gets with computers and special, you know, there's proprietary things in, in vehicles that you have to send them out. I would expect it to be less, but I can't give you any kind of a sense, you know, you would, you'd hope it would be less to do stuff in-house, what the person could, could handle, but we don't have any applicants anyway, so it's a moot point at this point.
Just talking about highway expenses in your.
Speak up, Dan. To everybody in the audience, here, right here in the room.
Oh, okay, so just under highway expenses, in your budget wish list two, it goes down by 70K.
Okay, so that is a quirk of the way that the select board wants to do general wages as opposed to winter wages. We put that placeholder, okay, let me back up. Winter wages and winter roads are some of the few municipal accounts that can be overspent with the select board declaration of a winter emergency. There is some rule in Department of Revenue that you have to, you want, do you want to take this, so I don't?
Sure, so for the, for the two new members that we have, whatever you budgeted for the previous year, you have to at least match that amount every year going forward. In order to the DOR, in order to do a deficit spend in the middle of winter storms. If we were to add that 70,000 in whatever bucket we want to into those winter roads, and then two years down the road, we say, you know what, we haven't spent that, or for whatever reason, we cut 5,000, that year we could not deficit spend on it. So general practice is, well, I don't, past practice here was, you never put any more money in there.
Yeah.
And then you had, and he was able to cover it because we can't get four, 50% of his staff is missing, so he's, he's already got built in $120,000 of surplus money, and the argument last year was that 70,000 represented the real number that he needed, so we wanted to at least keep the budget whole, so we moved it to that line item, so if in a crisis we had to cut, we could. Randall, properly so, would prefer us to fund those line items as a department.
What I worry about is, we fund it at the same level, expenses continue to go up, so it looks like I'm managing the winter roads budget horribly.
There you go.
And I want the town to acknowledge that there is a real cost for managing our winter roads.
Yeah.
And John's got 99.9% of it.
Enough for Stephen.
Well, the caveat is, yes, we cannot declare our own snow and ice deficit if we go down. You could, but you don't want to do this because we know how fast they ask. Once you drop it, you can't declare it, but you can petition the legislature to allow you to deficit spend, and like I say, we all, we all know how quickly they act.
In the middle of the school.
In the middle of, especially in the middle of winter, so you don't want to do that under any circumstances, really.
So while, while I'm, I'm fine with however finance and select board wants to handle it, I do want there to be a recognition that there is a cost to winter roads maintenance and it, and it increases every year, so.
Yeah.
That's why there's a shifting of those between the request and the wish list.
And it might even make sense every year, you just, you put in a 2% increase.
I mean, I've got a pretty good amount of data to show you what it, how it go, you know, a trend line or whatever, so you can get a reasonable cost where you hope it doesn't.
Right, but in theory, with global warming, we're not going to have those winters anymore, right?
Well, I mean.
You can't see me down here, but that was tongue-in-cheek.
Okay, because honestly, we've been spending more on treatment events.
Well, the price of salt.
We go through these rain events, and then it washes all the salt off the road, and I have to go out again.
Yep.
You're going to have more freeze involved.
Yeah.
So there's more patching.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, becomes more ice events, which means rather than plowing, you're actually adding, you know, treatment or whatever, which is additional cost, but while on the subject of snow and ice deficit, we went through this a couple of weeks ago, and you reached out because one was under, but it's combined. I just, because I am now leaving, Scott would be the one that can actually, other than the select board, declare a snow and ice deficit. Any idea where you are right, right now?
I don't have that number on me, I know with the wages, unspent wages, we are in okay shape. Last time we checked, I haven't, we haven't had any more snow, so I haven't ordered any more salt, and that's one of the big, big hits.
It just became a quick mentoring moment to bring Scott aware of, aware of that, so thank you.
Right on.
Very good, thanks. Okay.
Did we, we kind of, I lost where I am, we kind of touched on winter, winter expenses.
But Randall, just because it is a big change, it's a, I know why, but you're asking for 40,000 more in MS4 storm, can you just spend a minute on why?
MS4?
Yeah. Storm water management, you want to go from 28,000 to 68,000.
So for that, we're going to separate 2019, got a ref.
It's going to be your permit compliance?
Oh, isn't this to get the?
Oh, so, street sweeping, yeah, we, we have done it in-house, and since our sweeper is in the shop still, last year we ended up having to go out-of-house for it. I think even this year, we will be contracting out for at least a portion of it. The sweeper, it's nice to have, but I want it to be able to run when I need it for like the prep work, for instance, when I, when I need to pave a road, the coordination between getting the paver to come in, I need to be able to act pretty fast to get that road swept up and prepped for the paving company, and it's a lot easier if I have that piece of equipment in-house than trying to go outside, whereas the street sweeping required by the MS4 permit is a little easier, I can get them in, they can do their job, and it's not as time-sensitive as.
And just, if I remember right, the last time you priced out a street sweeper was about $272,000?
Roughly 300, man.
300,000?
Yeah.
So if we paid 40,000 for 10 years, we could have got a new one?
Yep.
And usually you're trying to do street sweeping twice a year, is that right, around town?
Required by our permit to do it twice a year.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
At least in the jurisdictional areas, which I can go into if you need me to.
Okay, what else you get there?
Okay, we touched on winter roads, I think you all know what the expenses are, it's salt, sand, chips, if we, we sometimes use on dirt roads, plow blades, don't know if everybody, everybody realizes this, but the blade that's running against the road wears down, it's abrasive, so. Winter patch, plow subcontractor, we use to plow the school and take care of all of the sidewalks that the municipality owns, and town hall steps and walks is what that plow subcontractor is, and occasionally we do get stuck and we need to be towed.
So just go back to the contractor again, I just wanted to be sure I'm seeing this, 35,000, right?
Yeah. It was, there's a trend, an upward trend, because they're coming out more, I've budgeted 50,000, because we have added sidewalks in the past four years of the Glendale Road Conservation Area, Palmero, Palmero Meadow Road Conservation Area.
In front of the seven.
Conant Park and Cemetery on Route 10, we go, we keep adding sidewalks and we have, so our cost goes up there.
And how long is the contract for with that company, is it just a yearly contract or a three-year, or?
We signed a through, did we sign an extension?
We just signed a new contract with them for three years.
So that's what the 50,000 is, or?
It's, it's, the contract is based on inches of snow, there's a, there's a formula for each event, but in general, I'm budgeting 50,000 for it.
And you signed a three-year contract, so we're honored, we have to honor that for three years, assuming there isn't an exit clause, but at the end of that three years, if you were fully staffed, would you still need to utilize that service?
Yes, we've always used a plowing subcontractor, my staff.
Being fully staffed?
Yeah.
All right, so that's not a potential cost savings?
No.
Okay, anybody else?
Any other questions on winter roads? I think we kind of covered the winter wages before. My building expenses is higher here, but.
We know, it's an older building.
Yes.
Buildings there.
There's some, I should hide these again. It's everything you see here, and my justification is, justifications are over here, I think most of it's self-explanatory, if anybody has a question on any particular line.
What's the biggest increase here?
Biggest increase, I, did it increase all that much for?
High percentage, it went up like 14% or so.
I mean, electricity has gone up a lot, as you can see from FY20, which was a question I had, the cow-pow credits we have, is that due? a question I had, the cow power credits we have, is that due to expire or be renegotiated at some point? I feel like it's gone up pretty significantly over time, is my perception.
At some point, I believe both the net metering and the cow power was, cow power was at least 10 years. So that would be out right around 2008, yeah, 2008, I wish, 2028, 2029.
Oh, so a little, little ways to go on our current one.
Still a ways to go.
Okay. I think heating oil, you can see, can be pretty variable, because we have, what, eight bays in the mechanics bay, and if they're all poorly insulated, and we try to keep them at like 54, so diesel doesn't gel, some of this, hopefully, if we get the heating design back and it gets funded fully, we'll have a more efficient heating system.
Now, didn't, didn't we already budget for that?
I thought so.
We budgeted for it, and then we, it wasn't, it wasn't enough. Our estimate we got was a poor estimate.
Yeah, it was kind of, what was originally done and was funded was, you know, basically through a contractor's estimate, which actually we found out that really wasn't adequate and didn't address the efficiency there, so we're going through an engineering study currently at the Highway Garage.
For heating design. It's underway, though, so I don't know, I don't know what kind of savings we could see there, but one would presume that it would be more efficient.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's it.
Those are probably your, your big costs, right there, utility related, yeah.
Are you going to touch on transfer, transfer station tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll finish off of highway, if anybody has any questions on highway, I can go to transfer station.
Just out of, out of curiosity for the, looking into cost savings across, do you have any, do you have any cell phones in your site?
Yes, um, my two, my two foremen have, oh, well, that's, this is the, the facility phone bill.
Oh, sorry.
General Highway, uh-
I think he had $1,000 in there.
Right here. Cell phones, we are under the, I was going to mention this, but I just let the fire chief without butting in. I know that police and myself are under state pricing for cell phones.
Oh, okay, great.
So we, it's been negotiated for us.
That's awesome, thank you.
Complies with procurement regulations.
Okay, so you'd, maybe I would find the same thing if I looked at the fire department, or I can-
Yeah, I can forward the information of who we deal with.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Just one-
On that, we, we have two cell phones, I don't take a cell phone.
Yeah.
I use my own, but not for-
What about for, do we have internet service down?
Yes.
Do we pay for that?
That would be under building, internet is here. It's 89, 89.99 per month.
And IT support was nothing?
IT support has been handled through Town Hall, I guess we had a contractor or, or a preferred vendor that Ed preferred I use, so I put it down to zero.
Okay, is that gonna, that's not going to keep on with that particular vendor that's been there, right? That's going to come into our overall Town Hall improvement, or not? With the IT managed services that we want to look for?
Yeah, his laptop will always be covered under that vendor's services. The other computer that's over there would be basically à la carte, but we would use the same vendor.
That vendor, or a future vendor?
What?
That particular vendor listed there, Northeast Titan?
Oh, no, 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 this is, this is, so I'm sorry, I didn't update that particular line item, that's who I've used in the past.
Oh, okay. So I'm understanding that the IT managed services, if we go that route, that's going to incorporate also some-
Yeah, one of, one of my suggestions to the IT Technology Committee and the Select Board is, that's basically under policy, that we require all town departments that have, you know, computers, printers, or what have you, to go to a single ticket system, they are not contracting or contacting, you know, their own vendors, that probably will come through the town administrator's office and be passed off as a ticket.
Yep, okay, thank you.
The only, not to keep us here all night, but the only other question was about the admin assistant highway, is that going up by like 11% the salary, or did I just calculate it wrong?
Um, I don't know what the calculation is, I know we had a mid-year adjustment last year.
Okay.
That could be the difference you're seeing, because my calculation only goes up one step from current wage.
Okay.
So I'm guessing that might be the difference?
All right.
Or it's a transcript number. I can, if you email me-
You want to buy that, 3,000?
I don't know if that shows the, the amount that was allocated at the special town meeting, maybe it doesn't. I can, we, I can double check that and get back to you.
Seems like a big jump.
Yeah, the mid-year adjustment's not in what you're looking at.
Oh, it's not, it's not a good number.
Thank you, that explains that.
Okay, anybody else?
Anything else on this one?
Okay.
Because if you thought this was complex, wait till we start talking about transfer station. Oh, no!
You're, by power of God, that's yours, I'll get it.
Uh-oh. You got one? We got one, Ed, we got.
Yeah, that sounds better for Ed.
Yep, this is not as hard, sorry. Thanks for trying to be there for me. There's three minutes left in the meeting, so.
Yeah, we, we schedule everything to stop at 8 o'clock, guys.
Your power just shuts right off.
Not quite, but, yeah, we do want to touch a little bit, and, and I know you haven't fully made up the budget for the transfer station yet, because there's a few unknowns.
Yeah, I need guidance.
But I think we need to-
Ditto.
-just sort of talk about some of the challenges you're having over at the transfer station in terms of that being run as an enterprise fund, et cetera, so.
So the 24 mended budget is what, suspect numbers, that there's a reality that's different than that, is that the premise for this?
For-
Oh, you have a completely different thing.
For which, for the transfer station, or which?
Yes.
I don't- For, for, I'm sorry, which one proposed?
I was looking at Bradley's spreadsheet, continue, or begin.
Okay.
Transfer station in mine has nothing in there yet.
No, he sent a separate, is what I'm looking.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay, he sent mine, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Got it.
That will be my last claim, before you can get out of here, I probably shouldn't have done.
Uh-oh, it's not the right one.
No, is it plugged in?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, now it is, okay. Transfer station, everybody's aware that the transfer station is an enterprise fund.
What does that mean?
So, are you, are you serious?
I don't know.
Okay, so, it's a fee-based system where the fees are supposed to cover the expenses, it's not funded by the general fund?
Okay.
Or?
Correct.
Something that we're going to muddy up?
Well, an enterprise fund should be self-sufficient, but in the event that it does not become self-sufficient, the fallback and guarantor is the general fund, which means we're moving tax dollars that aren't meant to go there, to support that enterprise fund, and you're going to find out that we've spent $172,000 of tax dollars that we could have possibly hired somebody in Concom or a planner, but we have to augment the transfer station and-
Well, technically, you don't-
For all the right reasons.
But that's what we're going to talk about.
Well, we can't run a deficit, we gotta-
Well, let's, let's talk about it, let's understand the issue, we're not making any decisions tonight.
All I'm talking about is historically-
Let's have Randall present, yeah.
There's two major things that have, that have been going on. The recycling market, where we used to get either no refund or, or small pittance of revenue from, has completely fallen out, and we now have to pay a recycling processing fee. That's one factor that has increased costs. The second one is just trucking and disposal costs have gone up. You can see here, we've gone like, it was pretty stable, 97, 9100, 106, 110, 124, and I'm projecting 125 for next year, that may be conservative. In addition, less people are using the transfer station for reasons I don't know if I understand, it may be convenience, just the changing patterns of people that are moving into town, the convenience of having somebody do curbside pickup, our permit numbers have dropped over time, so you're trying to spread more fees or increasing costs over less people, it's not working. So what has happened is, we have started running deficits, we increased bag costs last year in an attempt to bring revenues up, but with less people and increasing costs, I project that, so the 33 and the 56,000 are actual deficits we ran in FY22 and FY23. FY24, even with the bag, the bag increases-
That was what, $2 or something, was it?
Yes, and a focus on trying to increase revenues down there by being very aware of what people are throwing away and charging them appropriately, I still project that we may run a $48,000 deficit. For '25, I started building a budget that included, I looked at, one of the closest competitors is Valley Recycling in North Hampton, they have a fee structure that is slightly different than ours, they don't charge a permit fee, but I still try to compare apples to apples, their bag fees are, are higher.
You've got a tab on that, right? The fee comparison tab, yeah.
I do, do you want me to make it public?
Well.
I can, if you, if you want to see it. So I compared-
I'm going to hide here.
Well, I mean, are we going to try and encourage more people to go somewhere else? I mean, that's not my goal, that would-
Yeah.
-hasten the demise.
Well, I think just to understand where we are, given other competitors, I mean, we may not be for the curbside service.
So here, here's Valley Recycling's fees, our current fiscal fee schedule, and this is what I was proposing for modest increases. I can scroll.
But even if you just look at what another recycling center charges versus what you're charging, just to show the differences there.
Right, it's, it's, it's not that much higher.
Oh, okay.
And so even if we brought our, our, our fees up to competitive, to be competitive with Valley, I still project, it's kind of hard to project tipping fees, because it's all based on what people bring in.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of a guess, the tipping fees.
Yeah.
I just guessed at 25,000. But I could project out permit fees, the increase in permit fees based on if the same number of people bought permits this year, which doesn't match the trend, it's been decreasing, and then bag fees, raising them again to levels comparable with Valley Recycling, I would still run, in my projection, a 34 and a half thousand dollar deficit. You might be asking, well, why don't we just raise fees more? I think what that would do is hasten people going somewhere else. So I guess my question is, where does everyone think we should go? Is, is, should we try and raise fees, these are the scenarios I can see, should we raise fees to the point where we would try to not be in a deficit, break even, even though it may hasten people going elsewhere? Should we close the transfer station now and cut our losses? Or does the town think it, an important service, that they would fund 34 and a half thousand dollars? Those are, that's my question, of how to, how to progress.
I have a question, maybe we can talk about the expenses, because-
Sure.
We talked about the transfer station before, and the comment was, we have to keep it going, because we have to, I don't know what the right term is, service the, the existing landfill.
Right. Okay, so that, that cost-
There's a fee associated with that.
Yes, that is, under, where is it?
So like, if we were to-
Compliance and consulting costs.
So if we were going to shut it down, we'd still pay-
You'd pay 11,500, and you would need to contract out for town trash, like, Town Hall, Fire-
Oh, I see.
Police, Highway.
Yeah.
Because right now, the Highway Department collects it and then assesses a fee that goes back to the transfer station.
I'm going to muddy the wires real quickly here, because, okay, I, I'm going to simplify that, basically decide valuable service, not valuable service, do we assume the $12,000 and just pay that and do away with it? So simplify that thought process, it might get you to the end, but to complicate the deficit calculation, Town Hall pays to the Highway Department currently $3,200 in a year for that service. I have hesitated to go out and contract to find out what it would take to, what the cost would be to actually change over to a dumpster, or barrels that get picked up every two weeks, every four weeks here, because I know this particular situation, but we have other departments that are doing the same thing. Because I belong to the Cost efficiencies committee, I really believe that probably could save on the cost side, maybe the cost would be about two-thirds of what we're paying to the Highway to do that.
Transfer station.
For transfer station through the Highway. So, guess what? If we do that to save the money, it increases that deficit. Okay, that all being said, valuable service, not valuable service, and I'm going to suggest, if you really want to keep it, and there probably is a valuable service here, that perhaps the way to look at it of closing that gap, and yes, it's probably going to take some taxpayer dollars to come over to supplement that, what you can do with an enterprise fund, you just can't do a lot, a, a big portion of it, is perhaps it's taking a look at things, and some of these are going to be minor changes, rather than doing, selling bags, go to bag stickers, okay? A lot of complaints about the bags, they're cheap, they tear, they're double bagging anyway, go to the stickers, probably less of a, less of a price and a price savings over the bags, not a whole heck of a lot. The other thing you can do, if you want to take cash out of the mix, which I am convinced at some point in time, the auditors are going to tell us, they don't want at the transfer station being handled, is you can actually use those, whatever the value is of the bag stickers, to go towards, to pay off the tipping fees, as, as long as you transferred through. Use some taxpayer dollars. The other thing I really wonder about, do we have a community, you know, close to us that maybe does not have a, their own transfer station, and does not have trash pickup? Could we offer this service to that community, and therefore expand and maybe start on an upper trend?
Find some efficiencies of cost.
Right, exactly, so, I, I think if you come to the conclusion you would like to keep this as a valuable service, really look at this at a three and four tier level to close that gap, and then close that gap with the tax dollars.
Well, your, your comment about stickers is interesting, I think I'm, I'm aware of some other communities that do do that, and I think that's a comment that I know I've, I've received from a couple of newcomers to town, saying, you know, I've got my trash bag in my, in my kitchen garbage can, but then I got to take it out and I got to put it in the one for the dump, for the, sorry, for the transfer station too, and it's like, this double bagging is, is crazy, we're just, you know-
Bad for the planet.
Yeah, so there's already that kind of-
You get your garbage container to, to match the bags from the transfer station, and you just use that bag, the small bags.
But so far, so far, the transfer station bags have not been terribly sturdy for-
Three years I haven't had a single problem, or seven years. No problem, I got three kids.
Like years ago I did, but in the last three years.
But I also don't try to put 100 pounds in a 20-pound bag.
Most people don't tend to use their transfer station bag in their household kitchen, as far as I know, but who knows? I shouldn't say most, some people don't. So anyway, the question came up, though, is, as to why would we want to keep on using, you know, two bags and all that kind of, you know, wasting plastic and recycling and all that kind of stuff, so.
So I do have one comment on this, and it's not just for the point of discussion, is I, I've talked to other recycling coordinators at the meetings, and what will happen with stickers is, you don't need to affix them to the bag, and so people will wait until the attendant's not looking and palm the sticker. So you're losing, you lose revenue really easy there, whereas if I look out that window and I, you check it frequently, you're going to see the yellow bags in there, and you're going to see if somebody doesn't use a town bag very quickly, and you can catch them. We, it's something I, we struggle with, is I've covered the transfer station, and people will wait until you have your head turned and throw stuff into the open tops, it's, you have to be very proactive down there in order to get revenue, and I would worry about things that would make it easy to lose revenue. In addition, stickers would allow people to use any size garbage bag- In addition, stickers would allow people to use any size garbage bag, whereas right now we have very controlled 15-gallon option and a 30-gallon option. So it's apples to apples. Everybody pays, you pay $2 or whatever it is for a small bag, everybody pays that same. It wouldn't be a sticker where they would pay one price and then somebody could use a, you know, a 35-pound contractor bag.
Right.
And somebody else is using it.
You might need more than one sticker on that bag. That would be the only other way that they would do that.
Who's gonna police that?
But then controlling that, yeah, I know.
It's not postage.
Enforcing that would be a challenge, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Before we leave the compliance and consulting, I did have one more question.
Sure.
How many years do we know, how long do we have to pay that fee? Is that like perpetuity? Like, how long do we?
My guess is yes.
Yeah.
All right.
It's capping, it was.
Yeah, because you've got to close landfill.
It was capping the existing landfill.
We do, so some of the monitoring that goes on there is you have residences around there, and so you have to monitor that landfill gas is not migrating underground, so we have wells, Sentinel wells that are checked, I believe quarterly. And then every other year, we have groundwater sampling to make sure there's no leachate contaminant plume emanating from the transfer station.
So that is a fixed cost for, as long as this town is going to exist.
Yes.
That's great.
But, where's my, my cursor not moving. If you see every other year, it's 11,000 to 12,000. On the odd years, it's much less. Groundwater sampling for the different constituents we taste, we have to test for, is very expensive.
Okay.
One way to look at this is.
Okay, yeah. Anybody have any thoughts about that? I mean, you know, one thing we, I mean, I don't know, part of me feels like, I don't know whether any kind of a public education campaign would help, whether a quick survey out, you know, Survey Monkey would help, just to get some input from town residents as to, you know, what's the level of interest rates. Some people may not even know that the transfer station exists. I mean, you've been lauded for the great recycling program that's going on over there, which is pretty amazing compared to some of the communities around us, and I guess I would hate to see that all disappear.
I would as well, honestly.
Major, I realize we don't get paid a lot for it, but people are, people are using it, for sure.
The people that use it, I'm pretty proud of the different ways we've been able to keep things out of land.
Thousands of pounds of textiles and all those reports you put out. I mean, books, all that kind of stuff that.
But people can do that at other facilities as well.
But we're less costly right now in terms of, well, comparing that one.
Costly to the town, we're running in a deficit.
But we're, yeah, but we don't know what the price is for like USA Recycling or some other curbside pickup, you know, in comparison, probably, but.
There's other benefits.
If it happens like shared dumpsters between residents or something, then you're gonna be less likely to do the recycling.
True. Yeah, and at some point, I don't know, people are going to have to recycle. I don't know how judiciously the trash haulers are currently checking whether people are recycling. I know it gets done at the transfer station.
It doesn't really get recycled, I'll bet you it doesn't.
I can't, I can't say, I don't have enough information.
Commercial services in town now have automated trucks. And in they go, and it's just, you know, wrong word, it's fungible, it all gets mixed together, they're not checking anymore.
They're not checking.
I have two different cans, I have a recycled can.
Yeah, but they're both in the same truck.
No, it doesn't. Two different trucks combine and pick up one can.
Right, and they don't look to see if you have recycling in your trash, it just goes straight in.
But they provide me two different cans, so the cost savings to me is to utilize both cans, right?
But I was thinking, also, if you have a dumpster, I'm not talking.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, like an apartment, you have a dumpster.
You have two or three families that say, well, let's just pay, you know, $100 a month or whatever it is for a dumpster, and we'll all use it as the cost. But then you just, everything goes, it's just easier, you know?
So we're spending.
You're not recycling, and you're not taking those things out of.
Right. But then we're spending, well, I'll say 50K, I'm not sure what the exact number is as a town every year, to avoid some people not recycling, right? It seems like a very costly way to avoid that.
How many people would you say use the transfer station on Wednesdays versus Saturdays?
I know where you're going with this. I don't know if I have the numbers for that, but there, I know, if you, I know you know that we used to have the transfer station open three days a week, and as a cost-saving measure, I quit, was it Thursdays, right? We stopped, we stopped Thursdays, and the backlash from that was, I only have Thursdays off, so I know there are people that don't want to go on the weekends. I don't want to stereotype, but a lot of elderly go on Wednesday because there's less people there.
Right. I just wondered if you feel that there's enough traffic to make it worth being open 10 hours as it is on Saturday? Or if that's possible, like still be open, but maybe.
Maybe it has to be.
I'd have to do an analysis on the revenue on Wednesdays as opposed to Saturdays, which is something I can do to answer your question.
Or just the traffic, kind of certainly, the revenue. But like, how many people are there between, like each, you know, during which hours are the busiest?
What's your busiest hours on Wednesday?
So, the argument in why I stopped using the transfer station was because you had to buy a sticker, but you can only use it certain days of the week. And I wasn't always able to make it on those days of the week, where if I went to another place, I could go any day of the week except for Sunday.
See, it's part of my Saturday routine.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a lot of people it is.
I like this, pretty busy, I don't always have a Saturday morning to go do something.
How many, Randall, how many permits are out there right now?
900, oh, wait a minute, 24. So right now, well, I've projected based on previous trends, I, close to 1,000, 995 is my best guess of what we'll sell by the end of the fiscal year.
So in theory, that's, that's over 900 households.
Yeah, like 1,000 people.
Yeah.
And what I hope is this conversation doesn't cause people to, because we're talking about next fiscal year, we have to make a decision before July 1st, and I hope that people aren't already thinking, oh, I've gotta go look at other options.
No, that's not where I was going with that. So you got 900 there, that's 900 households. The average household in East, in South Hampton is three people, that's 2,700 people. So you're talking about possibly making changes that affects 50% of this community. So I get that the numbers are going down, but you're impacting 50% of the community.
Something like that. I think at one point, Lucy told us, I may be wrong, but what sticks in my head is we have like 2,500-ish households, for like 6,000 people. So 2,500 households, and if 1,000 households are getting permits, is what we're seeing, maybe.
So the way I've kept is, those.
It's not a small number, I hear. And they're voters.
Yeah, right. You use the transfer station. The people who use the transfer station should cover the costs of using the transfer station. So if 50% of the people are using it, then I would assume, if you subtract the cost that is the maintenance for the burden of our forefathers and their use of the land and that landfill, then the remainder cost should be.
I have a clear number on it.
It should break even as an enterprise fund.
I guess, you know, one question too, and I don't know if anybody knows what's, what the big picture is in the recycling market. I mean, I know China's had a role in this, and all these fees have dropped in terms of whatever we're able to get for revenue, but is there any bigger projection, any bigger picture out there in terms of this turning around sometime? Because I think the increase of telling, or not telling, but educating people to do more recycling, I think is, to me, it's only increased over the number of years to go do more recycling. But how, how is that gonna be?
So what I've read in the industry newsletters is that people are always looking for ways to use waste, recycling streams, right? But what holds a lot of people back is contaminant, contaminants. So I know, I try to put out educational posts on Facebook a lot, because we have, we have the mixed container stream, which is cans, bottles, and certain plastic containers. There is so much minutia of what is and isn't recyclable that I would guess, and it is purely a guess, maybe a third of what goes into that is not recyclable. And so that goes to the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility, which is who we're contracted with, that's where our recycling goes, and they sort it. They have to sort out all that contaminant, all the contaminants, and then they have to dispose of them. And that is why they instituted the, that cost that we never had, the recycling processing fee. If we could find a way to educate people to get more pure recycling streams, I think you could actually create markets for them. And not just me, I mean, that's what the newsletter says as well.
What the industry says, yeah, okay. Any comments, anybody?
Can we just stay the norm?
Yeah, no, I think this is, at least good to bring it up tonight. I don't think we have any, I think we have to do a little bit more thinking.
I do like the idea of, piggybacking on what Dan was saying though, you know, the breaking out the cost of the, the old dump, right? That's town's responsibility to pay when they capped it. Figuring out what the true cost of trash removal to town facilities are, because I think the fire department, they're only 500 bucks, and I don't know if that's because they're driving it there themselves in a truck that was already supposed to be turned in and not on the road. Hold on, Randall.
Okay, sure.
And then the police department was something like $3,000, and I don't know what's going on over at Norris.
In the park?
But those are real numbers. I mean, so that should be taxpayers' responsibility, getting the garbage out of the, what is that number? I don't think it's gonna be the year 35, but it is something. And then, and then I would go, whatever the rest of it is, we either, even if we gradually say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have to work this in fees, and it's gonna be a three-year approach, so we're gonna subsidize for three years to get to this spot, and figure out what we can do. But I'm not in favor of closing the transfer station. I think closing the transfer station is gonna result in trash being on the side of the roads throughout town.
I agree.
Mattresses, TVs, so I think we need to see if we can figure out a way to do it. And that's my two cents.
Well, and maybe one of your points is just that 11,500, that compliance consulting fee, because that was for the capping of the old landfill, that maybe that is now an inherent town cost.
I will tell, I will say that prior to, there was a, Donna might be able to speak on this more eloquently, but we had a, we had a loan for the capping that was paid over, how many, do you know how many years?
20.
20 years, and transfer station operations paid off that loan.
Thank you.
So, I mean, it's, that was a cost that the enterprise fund funded, what I would argue could be considered a town cost.
Yeah, well, I'm not in favor of going back and trying to collect 20 years worth of revenue.
But at the time.
It's not a work of the street, you know what I mean? But at that point in time, the enterprise fund was able to absorb it all. But we're at a point now with changing conditions and Chris's point.
We're a different world.
With China not buying the boatloads of stuff from us anymore. Whatever the reason is, we need to readjust, and I say, I'm in support of keeping the transfer station open if we can figure this out.
I would like to underline that, I'm entirely supportive that it would reduce the enterprise fund deficit, but it would also reflect that that's a forever cost for the town, whether or not we operate the transfer station.
Absolutely.
That's a legacy obligation, and we should take that off the table.
It's not part of the transfer station.
When evaluating whether the transfer station is a subsidized activity, it's not fair to burden it with that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other comments or thoughts on that? Anything else you wanted to raise tonight, Randall, or have we covered the gamut on?
No, but just, if anybody wants these, my calculation sheets, to go over them.
Scott, just send those around.
Or if you, there's anything you'd like me to analyze that I can get you for data, please reach out to me. I'm more than happy to work, because I need, I'm looking for guidance.
Let's try to take that approach of, what, what the heck could we do in terms of fees and costs to make it break even over the next three years? So in three years' time, if we do, say we're gonna subsidize the costs between now and then, what does, what would that fee structure look like, or even structure?
Well, you've put together some thoughts about some changes in fees, like sticker fees and things in general, just as ideas.
But also some of the stuff we've touched on tonight, maybe, East Hampton is a no responsibility community, they do all curbside pickup, they don't have a transfer station. Maybe we should entertain out-of-town people possibly using it, because I think if we can get more permits sold, we can capitalize on some of those economies of scale.
Right.
And go the opposite way from where we're going now.
What would be the use case for those residents? Is it gonna be mostly bulk items that you think they would take advantage of?
For, for East Hampton?
Yeah.
For anybody coming in from another community?
Um, I mean, I think they're all private haulers, so they would.
They're private hauls.
Yeah, it's not a town.
I understand.
Yeah.
As a town resident who doesn't have a sticker, I would pay money to go throw something away if I didn't have a sticker.
So the way I've approached that before, Dan, is that I feel like it's a package deal, because we've had people saying, well, I want to come down and throw my recycling in, it doesn't cost you anything.
It costs.
Well, now it does.
That's good.
And, and there's certain things, like, here's an example, motor oil. We don't charge a fee, or we charge a fee currently over five gallons, because motor oil is pretty hazardous, and if people are disposing of it improperly, then, you know, you're gonna have environmental impacts to that. So we will subsidize that cost in order to have people not dumping it down catch bases.
Yep, yep.
And so, that's why I really feel strongly that it's a package deal. Like, we pick up mattresses. Mattresses are another subsidized item, because we don't want to be picking them up on the side of the road anyway, because then we get zero revenue, where right now we get 20. So, yeah, that's why I see, I really see it as a package deal. I'd love if there was some other way to do it.
On topic of revenue enhancement, just like public transit, there's a, there's not a lot of price elasticity. You run people out of the market by raising the price. How else might you raise revenue? You have 40% market share now. If you increase that by 50%, that would make profound difference on your budget.
Presumably, yeah.
And I think you offer a suite of services that is unmatched by any of the private haulers. I don't know that they contract additionally for bulk items, but I do hear on social media the grousing when they annually raise their rates, and there's some perceived lack of good service. I'm not casting, I'm just reporting.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay. All right, well, good. Well, I think this has been very informative tonight, I don't want to hang on too much longer here, but thank you, Randall, for all the information here, and I think this one is one that we gotta do some more thinking about and figure out what, what makes the most sense. I mean, I think it's a service that many people in town have come to appreciate over time, and it would be a big, big change, I think, for a lot of people to not have this service. So we just have to figure out how to work it, yeah?
What if we had, put an ad hoc committee together to focus on this topic over the next year, to try to come up with a way to make the transfer station, I don't want to say sustainable, what's the right word, economically viable?
That's a great word.
I think a sustainability, like saving the planet kind of thing.
You're saving the transfer station, Dan.
Okay, buddy. So maybe that's something.
It's a thought, it's a thought. It's a thought, we'll take it up. Okay, so with that, I think we've gotten through at least the three big departments tonight. We don't know anything yet about the school, and we may not know for a bit on that. I guess question would be for finance committee folks. We didn't talk about revenues tonight. Ooh. Do we have some estimated revenues?
I got a bet.
We've got a draft of that, do we not?
Brother does, yes.
Brother does? Yeah, okay. So maybe we could take that up at a, at the next meeting rather than doing that tonight. What was I gonna say? Oh, is there, are there other departments that finance would like to have, you know, come before us, and, you know, what would you, these are the three biggies. Police, we sent around the PowerPoint from Chief Illingsworth the other night that he did, and then these two tonight. So knowing that the school will come eventually, the other ones that would probably be, would be the townwide budget as well as probably the library and COA would be the next two kind of combined ones that we would do maybe. So maybe another meeting with those two and any.
Any of those smaller ones.
Yeah, some of the other ones, I don't know that you've, I don't know if you've done like town clerk and treasurer separately, or is that, they just would come and.
I mean, they've presented before, but I don't know that it's really necessary.
Right.
I would suggest instead of doing departments, that perhaps as soon as we get the Collins report, it might be good to have a joint session.
Right.
And go over the Collins report and decide as a group how we're gonna implement that.
The way just.
And then we can pitch it down to PBB.
Yeah, that'd be good too, yeah, yeah. And the other probably, the other department would be Board of Health probably, too. So that might be another one. So, yeah, okay. All right. So how often are you guys meeting normally? Would you have another meeting in a couple weeks, or what's your, your schedule, sort of?
Yeah, we don't have another meeting, so we're gonna do that tonight.
Okay.
Well, you're thinking about that. Who, what's the process for scrutinizing and validating revenue assumptions?
We need, we need to-
I gotta go.
Yeah, we need, we need to get the, we need to get the, the revenue-
Just helping the process, and we can leave it.
There is not a process.
So Bradley's, Bradley's got some-
It'd be a problem if there's not a process.
Bradley's got some, some draft numbers in, but we don't know what all of those are really gonna look like yet. So, we've got some draft numbers that we can work with in another meeting, yeah.
Yes, we have to.
Okay. So, okay.
We can do a plus or minus ten percent on some of the projections and see.
I mean, the biggest problem is the, the school is, isn't unknown, so we, you know, we've got revenue, but we don't know how far, how far our gap is gonna be until we see some of those figures. We just know it's gonna be there, so, good, all right, so.
Thank you. You too.
Perfect, okay. So maybe our next meeting will be on the twelfth, normally, I think it is? Our, our regular select board meeting? Am I right? Yeah, it'll be on the twelfth. So, if we wanted to, if you wanted to, we could have-
Can, well-
Yeah, go ahead.
We could all be here, and like, you know, it's always like, on the twenty-first, if we want to set up, we can talk to the border, health, and library, COA, P P House. They're smaller than the highway and-
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, and by then, I mean, I'm hoping that by then we will have the, the wage plan back in from Collins as well, so that might be a good-
We're supposed to have it in September.
Yes, the job descriptions have finally gone back around, so that's back to them now to put them in the categories of the, the wage, so no, I don't know that, we, we put it out there in September, I'm not sure when we were expecting it, but yeah. So we should have that back around, so that might be good. So, March twenty-first for your, your meeting probably, as, as an idea. We may have some separate meetings in between time, just for, just looking at other things that we, we have for some of the, some of the smaller, smaller budget requests, or something like that. Okay. So with that, if we have nothing else, I think I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in full?
Aye.
Aye, and, yeah, and we'll let Finn come if you want to do your adjournment, or not yet?
Uh, we have a couple things to do.
Okay, fine.
March twenty-first is another open space committee call.